All right, Commissioner Paddock.
Present.
Commissioner Brunda. Commissioner Gable. Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner Abrams.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Hamilton. Here. And Mr. Nolan. All right, and also, staff present, we have Clay White, Justin Horn, Angela Bolton, anyone else today? That's it.
Frank Reinhardt.
Frank, actually Frank Reinhardt.
Frank, okay, good. Okay, so we do have a quorum, we have four members of the commission here, so we can go ahead and have an official meeting. So I go ahead and if people receive a copy of the minutes and had a chance to review them, are there any questions, comments, or corrections to the Jim 16 minutes that were distributed?
No.
No.
Hearing none, we could accept the motion for them to be approved.
My motion that the minister will ask me in June 2022 be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is removed and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 16th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Those in favor say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye, okay, so the motion passes unanimously. So the first item on our agenda, then, we are having a work session, and we are going to be having a public hearing this evening on Mill Creek Municipal City Code Amendments. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Justin, or Frank, or whoever's going, or Angela, whoever's going to walk us through this.
Hello, everybody, so Angela Bolton is one of our staff members, who's going to be introducing the the code update we'd like to pass, and so I'll turn the floor over to her.
And Angela, could you introduce yourself briefly for Commissioner Paddock?
Sure. My name is Angela Bolton, I am the city's Surface Water Program Coordinator, which means I handle compliance with the stormwater permit issued, Phase Two permit issued from the State Department of Ecology.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. So this evening specifically, we're looking at, let me share my screen here for the brief PowerPoint that I've prepared. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. So tonight, we'll be discussing adopting an updated Stormwater Design Manual. So the following subsections of the presentation will go as follows, the purpose and need for this process, what's going to change, what the conclusions, what conclusions we can draw from this process, and then the recommended council or commission action. So the purpose and need for this is motivated by the fact that the city receives stormwater runoff into its stormwater infrastructure that transfers to surface water of Washington State, and therefore, we require, we are required to maintain coverage under the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit. Specifically, Special Condition Four of the permit, which pertains to compliance and standards, requires all permities to comply with a number of specifications amongst them, the state's requirements for using all known available and reasonable methods of prevention, control, and treatment, an acronym known as ACART, for dealing with stormwater discharges. ACART represents the most current methodology that can be reasonably required for preventing, controlling, or abating pollutants associated with discharge, and this list seems to get longer every year. The Stormwater Manual is used as guidance and implementation for applying ACART to stormwater discharges. So it contains best management practices that are applied to non-point source pollution controls, which are considered a subset of the ACART requirements. You may have heard of point sources, which would be discharges from, for example, a wastewater treatment facility. Stormwater is considered a non-point source because it is diffuse and comes from several different locations. So the purpose and need, the last purpose and need I can present is that the Mill Creek Municipal Code currently references the 2014 revisions to the 2012 edition of the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. The Department of Ecology authors new additions periodically, normally on a five-year schedule, but that can vary. So they have replaced the 2014 revisions with the 2019 addition, superseding these earlier additions. So we need to adopt the 2019 addition to stay current with requirements. So what changes in this new Stormwater Manual? Well, we've outlined a couple of them here, there's a requirement for applicants to perform continuous surface water modeling for new development and redevelopment. It modifies what we are requiring for redevelopment for impervious surfaces. It has enhanced equivalent areas options for stormwater management. It's updated minimum requirements and best management practices, and it's added an underground injection control program guidance for how to install and manage things and decide, design things and manage things for things like French drains. So in conclusion, adopting the 2019 edition of the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington is consistent with compliance to the requirements of the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit, and it maintains continuity for developers by continuing to use the Department of Ecology Stormwater manuals. We recommend that the commission amend, make a motion to amend the Mill Creek Municipal Code Chapter related to Stormwater Permit Compliance, which is contained within Articles 15 and select sections of Articles 15 and 16, and those specific articles and subsections can be found in the staff report that should have been included. And I understand, I can see that I ran through that rather quickly, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain that. I do, Angela. I just, I couldn't find the staff report on the agenda, and that's all I received. But were there any items added outside of the compliance requirements by Mill Creek? Uh, no, so what the new edition requires is it made things a little easier for developers, it improved, the changes have improved readability and usability. And these first two bullet points that are mentioned, the requirement for that applicants perform continuous surface water modeling for new development and redevelopment is really more relevant for cities that aren't built out, it's, it sort of becomes more important for new development rather than the situation we find ourselves in, in ourselves in, here in Mill Creek, which is more focused on redevelopment. It's a modeling of precipitation and inputs and places where inputs are occurring at the volume, frequency, and periodicity that would be relevant to questions about like erosion or sizing of infrastructure. So continuous surface water modeling means that you're using more frequent inputs at a shorter time step. So you're getting a more accurate reflection of the precipitation intensity as it occurs on a kind of a finer mesh across the, across the area of consideration. And the modifications to the redevelopment impervious surface requirements are testing a finer look at the effect of impervious surfaces and trying to better account for those in runoffs and that diffuse contribution to surface waters as a consequence. Angela, are those impervious surfaces, are those, if you could remind us, is, is impervious means where the water is absorbed through the, through that structure, or where it actually? No. Can't penetrate. Ground, ground surface, earthen surface is pervious, is permeable. Impervious surface is impermeable, so it doesn't allow water an opportunity to to enter the soil surface. So you're not contributing to groundwater at that point, and you're not storing anything in that sort of Vito zone at the top, above your water table. So that's why it ends up running off into, into surface water, into creeks, lakes, and into our, any catchment, that's why we have to have catch basins, is because the earth isn't able to absorb through pavement or asphalt. So driveways, streets, sidewalks, your roof. Okay.
So Angela, Angela, you made reference to the 2014 manual, and now we have a 2019 manual, and this is 2022. Do we probably expect another revision to this manual in another year or so? Is that kind of a five-year cycle?
So, so this manual is supposed to go from 2019 to 2024. So we have actually started discussions with the Department of Ecology, and when I say we, I'm referring to my counterparts at other jurisdictions around Puget Sound to sort of guide the department in terms of how they can help us interpret the manual and maintain compliance with the Stormwater Permit. But yes, so they've already started drafting out another edition of the Stormwater Manual.
And then, did you say, do we have a deadline to adopt this, or did Clay allude to that, that we have a hard stop to get this passed by?
Yes, so the permit refers to updates that we have to make to our municipal code that relate to various aspects of the permit, such as maintenance standards for our stormwater infrastructure, or how we are recognizing and prioritizing receiving waters within our jurisdiction. So for example, North Creek, Penny Creek, Nipple Creek, Mill Creek are all receiving waters, even though North Creek is the one that receives from the other streams. So this, and what the state wants through that permit is for us to have adopted some of these elements by a certain date, and in some instances, the, these required adoptions can be accomplished by simply adopting the new Stormwater Manual because those requirements are already spelled out in, in the manual, and thus, by adopting the new manual, they are incorporated by reference.
Okay. Is this supposed to be done by like September or so?
I, I will actually add here that we're actually past this particular deadline for this particular adoption. The deadline was June 30th, but Ecology does allow you to miss deadlines as long as you notify Ecology, you have missed the deadline, and you've given them a timeframe for when you are going to get back into compliance.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Angela, this is Alan. How much does the 2019 edition relate to wetlands and the areas inside and around the trails in Mill Creek? If at all.
I would say it, well, the, the last manual actually extended protections to wetlands, perhaps to a greater extent than the current manual.
Angela, can I jump in, because that's actually more of a development review question?
Okay.
Okay. So as Angela was saying, wetland protection is already kind of cooked into the manual. The main thing that changed between the last manual and this manual is actually pretty relevant to us here in Mill Creek, and that is the requirement to do, or perform a year-long inundation evaluation of a wetland that you're planning on discharging water into. Why that's important for us is a lot of our wetlands are kind of self-contained wetlands, they're not associated with rivers, they're depressions. And so we want to make sure that when we're discharging during the winter, we don't flood the wetland. And so that is actually one of the main wetland protection requirements of the 2019 manual. Besides that, the manual basically wants to, as Angela alluded to earlier, help us to achieve pollution reduction before we discharge into natural water bodies, like wetlands. So indirectly, the manual does support wetland protection in general, but by mainly focusing on treating the water before it has a chance to end up in natural water resource areas. Thank you, Angela.
So there are any other, any other questions for Frank or Angela at this point in time?
This is Sean, I have just have one question, are there any additional efforts or burdens or whatnot that might be placed on staff, city staff by updating these requirements? And if so, are those, have those been planned for by the staff?
Well, the, the there are, as I said, and as Frank mentioned, ongoing updates that have deadlines associated with them. So we are somewhat behind at this point, as Frank mentioned, with those June 30th requirements that we weren't able to meet. But there are others that are coming up at the end of August, at the end of, I think the next one is, there's one at the end of September, there are several that are due at the end of December. So I don't know that it's an issue of staff staffing as, that can't be overcome by an awareness of what needs to be done, and more, more specifically, the timelines to really have an accurate, it's been difficult to gauge what the time requirement is necessary for, for some adoptions over another. For example, the one that's coming up at the end of this month or next month. I started a while ago, so that one won't be nearly as as onerous as, as some of these, and the fact that we will have adopted the manual as a consequence of this meeting and the city council meeting next week will alleviate a lot of that pressure that you're asking about.
I will actually add to the other half of this. So the 2019 manual, the design review associated with the 29 manual is extremely similar to that of the 2014 revision. So by and large, it doesn't change our staffing, city staffing obligations, nor timeframes for development reviews, and so on and so forth. So typically, actually, it behooves us, when we adopt these new ACART standards, we actually benefit from the fact that a lot of the developers out there are already creating development applications in accordance with the 2019 manual, because there, this is a regional Western Washington manual. So ironically, we're at our most sensitive point right now, having not yet adopted the 2019 manual, because until we formally adopt the 2019 manual, theoretically, a development application we receive could still come in under the 2014 revision, and then now we're kind of trying to keep track of which developments were approved under which manual. So one of the things about this manual transition is that as soon as we adopt it, it kind of sets us up towards the, at least the next few years, having a consistent standard by which we are reviewing development applications.
Sounds important. Okay, thank you.
So then I think to go with our procedure here, I think we should probably open the Planning Commission Resolution 2022-171. I think it's quite long, at least take a gander down through it, so can you share that on the screen, Angela?
Yes, hold on.
And once you do this, Chair Hamilton, or Vice Chair Hamilton, you might, you'll want to open the hearing, open it up for public testimony, close, and then you can deliberate.
Yeah, well, I was planning on doing this resolution, and then there's also proposed amendments, have those on the record, and then do the hearing, Clay?
Sounds good.
That'd be, okay, I didn't want to have the hearing till all the information had been shared, but being the new chairman tonight, I wasn't sure. Okay.
Not sure why, why this isn't coming up. Hold on. There.
Bingo. And could you expand it a couple of clicks, please? Great. So I think we sort of want the Reader's Digest version, hopefully the members have had a chance to look at it, and we can sort of buzz down through it, and people ask questions if they have any, if that's okay with the balance of the board.
Well, one thing to keep in mind as you're cycling through this is, one of the reasons why there's so many individual code sections to be changed here is each one of those code sections makes an explicit reference to the 2014 edition of the 2012 Stormwater Design Manual. So really, most of what you're seeing here is actually rewording the words 2014 addition to the 2012 Stormwater Design Manual to 2019 edition of the Stormwater Design Manual for Western Washington, so that should help you kind of ease through this read-through here.
Not a lot of meat and potatoes, then.
Not at all.
Not at all.
It's, it's mostly a case of catching all the references in our Mill Creek City Code.
Thank you, Frank, that makes it easier to read.
So when you look at the bottom of the page, this is Alan, page one, it says, replace reference to 2012 manual, should that be 2014?
Well, so the, the full title, there, what they did was they abbreviated the title that you, you're reading here. The full title in the whereas, so it's okay as long as we catch the actual language correctly for the actual ordinance itself. The whereas is, the 2012 manual is a reference to the 2012 Washington Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. The Department of Ecology issued a document that they called the 2014 revision to the 2012 manual, which is essentially the 2012 manual with a few corrections and amendments. But just because you need to be consistent about your titling of these documents, that's why the full language that you'll see as Angela continues down through here to the actual code changes, those address 2014 addition, we probably shouldn't have abbreviated that too much in this whereas, just for clarity. Thank you. But it does get confusing because of that addition, or that revision aspect to this. To this day, I have two different manuals on my bookshelf, one that says the August 2012 manual, and the other that says the February 2014 revision to the 2012 manual.
And I have the 2019 edition.
I'm lazy, I, I use it online. One of the major changes they made to the 2019 edition was to make it more searchable and user-friendly to use in a web interface, and an electronic interface, rather than historical ecology books, which were largely written to be printed out in physical copy.
Was any public testimony solicited?
During the creation of the manual, yes, Ecology did have public comment periods. Angela alluded to the preparations that are underway for the next manual, and similarly, there is public comment periods and multiple public comment periods hosted by the Department of Ecology to vet the various drafts that they go through in order to produce these manuals. I actually participated in one of them back in 2017, representing the city of Izua.
And there have been recent ones where they've started listening sessions already. So there, if you go to the Department of Ecology's webpage on stormwater, they will provide some references to when the next listening sessions are, if you want to participate.
Commissioner, I don't believe we've received any comments on our public notice for this hearing. We have issued SEPA and provided the notice of public hearing for tonight, and I don't think we've received any public comments.
Please let me know if there's something I can do here to scroll faster or scroll slower.
I think basically get down to the red part. That's sort of all meat and potatoes up there that will be signed.
Okay. I noticed Matthew Nolan's, his last name was not written in there, is it just a first-name basis on there?
Yeah, we, we need to correct that.
So we want to open up the proposed amendments, and that's where all, that's where all the members are. And then we'll open it up for public comment. I don't see any members of the public on the screens here, but we'll check and make sure nobody called in, I haven't noticed that yet.
There we go.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and roll down. So there's a change from 2012 to 2019, and taking out the 2014. Yeah, so this is the generic change, sort of a blanket cut and paste through the document from what.
That is correct.
Okay.
Right, there are eight locations in the document, or in Mill Creek Municipal Code that needed to be changed.
Okay.
One of the things we also took advantage of, and you're now seeing it in 2.3, 2.4, is we, we took advantage of the fact that Ecology Manual was, as a definition, was actually designed, defined earlier in 1514, so once we corrected it there, what we did was we amended the subsequent sections to just say Ecology Manual to reference back to that definition, so we don't have to make eight changes the next time, we only have to make one.
Okay, we, we point to the parent document, whatever revision is current, okay? Good.
I would clarify by saying whatever addition is adopted. As was observed earlier, Ecology will often release a new Ecology Stormwater Design Manual addition a couple of years in advance of when they require cities to adopt that manual. Just as you're seeing here, the 2019 manual was released, but we're not talking about adopting it into the city until 2022. That will be the same thing for all future manuals as well.
Great, thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments on the latest document on the screen by the members of the commission? No. Hearing none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight, and we are opening up to discuss the Planning Commission Resolution 2022-171, and the proposed amendments to Mill Creek Municipal Code for the SWM, da-da-da, and the edits that were shown on the screen, and then also the explanation that was given to us by Cynthia or Angela a while ago. So is there anybody in the public taking part in this that would wish to make a comment on this action, proposed action in front of the Planning Commission? Okay, for the second time, is there anybody in the public listening in that would like to make any comments? Okay, so seeing nobody taking part from the public, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of our meeting for tonight. And so then, do we have a, any other questions or comments from the staff, or a possible proposed action for the Planning Commission? In the form of a motion.
Do we have a, a prepared motion to propose, Dave?
No, we don't. It's your, your.
Angela, could you bring that up, please?
Yes. Let me find it.
Oh, was there some language for proposed motion?
Yeah, we, we have a planning resolution that, I think we can. Yeah, we, we have a planning resolution that, uh, I think we can assist with this here.
Okay.
It's, it's basically compatible with the same, uh, motion that we would then bring to city council here this next week for the purposes of adopting the origins.
Okay. Was that set out to us?
Do you mean this?
This. I don't remember if I saw it or not.
Yeah, this is what.
So can we make it a little bit bigger, please?
Ooh.
Yeah.
That's perfect.
Yeah. So if somebody wants to read the portion off, the planning commission recommends that we adopt and read, read those next three lines. Next two lines.
To adopt planning commission resolution 2022 dash 0171 recommending to the city approval amendment, amendments to the Milk Creek Municipal Code Articles 15 and 16 concerning storm water permit compliance, the motion.
Hasn't been approved yet.
Thank, thank you.
I, I knew you folks would just, you know, go right along with a good idea.
We're, we're, we're being optimistic. Let's.
Well, you have a deadline. You have to be optimistic. Okay.
I'm trying to, I'm looking at the agenda, work sessions, um, item number C. So which of these are storm waters? Is it the LID wherever storm waters mentioned, LID storm water management, construction of storm water facilities and storm water system engineering and design?
Yes, it's all eight of those. Of those sections. I think there's four in section 15 and.
Article 15.
Article 15 and four in article 16.
It's five and three, we're close enough. Yeah. So we have a motion that's been made, moved. Is there a second for the motion made by Pietra?
Second, Sean.
We have a second by Sean. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Um, I do, yeah. Um, because I, according to my notes, we were told that the only change this, in this session would be to report to perform a year-long evaluation of water discharge for the development, so as not to flood the wetlands. So how does, um, do all of these individuals, is there something that we're missing here on the work session, item C, where it talks about the six different items? Changes in the Milk Creek Municipal Code?
So each of those, um, each of those mentions and on the agenda, those are each just references to where the code has been changed with the one word from 2014 to 19.
Oh, okay. Just the simple changes. All right. Thank you.
We're still on section C here. And so I'll have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, your hands go up. Those in favor of approving the motion as presented by Pietra and on the screen, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Hey, the motion passes anonymously. Great. Thank you. Very good presentation, Angela, for a very different, very complicated subject. So now we will move down to item D in our work session here, department update, future planning commission agenda items.
Do I share your screen, Angela, please? Thank you.
And so that, is that up to Mr. Clay?
Actually, we are going to have Justin do a presentation tonight on some possible code changes. So, uh, as we've been working together, there's a number of things that have come up when people are applying for permits or trying to use the code. Uh, and so there's some things that we'd really like to take a look at, uh, with you to see about making some possible changes to certain sections of Milk Creek Code. So, uh, Justin's going to walk you through some information tonight, and then we'll set a hearing at a future date. This is just for, just for discussion item tonight.
Uh, Clay, I think, well, that was, I, I can do that. There is two, there's an item D and item E. And due to the department update, he was the, uh, presentation I was giving.
On the department update, I don't have anything to share tonight. Uh, so we could, we can move on. Sorry about that.
Moving on to the next item, Justin, you got the four.
All right, let me share my screen one moment. All right, am I sharing the wrong screen? Here I am.
No, you had it right.
I did. Okay.
There it is.
All right, so. Uh, we have been considering quite a number of code amendments. We have a pile list going, but first we want to focus on chapter 1722, which is sort of a catchall section in the code. It deals with several different items. And each of these, I think we're looking at, we have, uh, we're bringing up because we've received either complaints or complications when processing permits. Yeah, so let me get into it. We have, uh, the first one I want to cover is fence setbacks. I did talk briefly about this last fall when I was still brand new, but I have a little more detail to share with you. So the current code in 172240 states that fences are not allowed in front yard setbacks. Now, the issue comes when, uh, there's a homeowner who has a corner lot. Each, each of those, uh, each, because for lots have two front yards. So you would have, yeah, so two front yards and so you have to have front yard setback on both sides, the facing the street. The, the problem is that our code is inconsistent in the PRD and the MDR, basically every zone but the LDR. You have to meet the front yard setbacks, no exceptions. However, in the LDR, there's an exception to where on the non-driveway side, uh, it can be up to, it could be within 10 feet of the street.
Right.
And the normal, as I have here on the screen, the normal setback in the LDR is 20 feet and the PRD, it's 15, MDR is 15 as well. So a homeowner in the PRD would not be, would, uh, on the non-driveway side have to have a fence at least 15 feet from the property line. And this is especially confusing because.
If somebody, please mute their mic. There's a lot of background discussion going on in somebody's house.
I'm sorry, that's, uh.
That's in your, that's in your office, Justin. Okay. I can't, I can't mute you. Sorry.
Yeah, unfortunately not.
Okay.
Or was I? Okay, so, uh, it's especially an issue because the property line is often not, uh, in areas where there are sidewalks, which is often in the PRD. Homeowners often think that their property line goes the edge of the street, when it's actually five or more feet away from the street. So the setback is actually much further than I think it is. And I, I have here some issues that I just covered. Some homeowners have frustration that the fence effect does not apply in their zone. We had a gentleman come to city council, uh, twice to complain about this. We also, a lot of homeowners are mistaken with the trilocation of the, the, their actual property line. So now I'm going to show you some examples of what various setbacks would look like on corner lots. So here's my first example. This is showing an example, there's a fence built with no setback. So the, the fence is right on the property line on, on that non-driveway corner. And then another example here is also no setback. This isn't a PRD, this is a sidewalk. And as you can see, the right of way extends all the way to the fence. All this, this bark with the, uh, rubber bodies there, that's all within the right of way. So it's also a no setback example. Now I have, here's what it would look like with five feet of setbacks. And then here's what it would look like with 10 feet of setback. And then here is 15 feet. Again, there's the right of way extends past the, what, or you may expect to be the, their property line. And lastly, just for some comparison, a 20 foot setback. Now, what we're proposing is to align all of the fence setbacks in residential zones. So make the exception apply, apply or not apply to all zones. So it's, it's equally applied in all zones. Um, and also we want to look at what is, how, how much of a setback exemption do we want? That could be anywhere from zero to 15 feet. Currently, the exemption is for 10 feet in the LDR zone, but we can make it whatever we want, whatever we think is, is most aesthetic and for special city. Any questions so far?
Uh, yeah, this is Alan. I'm just curious, when you're talking about, uh, adjusting these fences to setbacks, are we talking about perspective and application or a retroactive?
Not retroactive, only upcoming applications. Anyone who already has a fence to be grandfathered in?
It, it's really just a balancing act, you know, between, you know, the setback on that non-driveway side is there mostly for aesthetic reasons. From a homeowner's perspective, sometime you have a lot of yard on the other side of your fence that you maintain, but you don't actually get to enjoy it. So, um, you know, I mean, I think the thing is to provide some, I think, is to provide some balance. I mean, one thing that is currently allowed is you are allowed to have a fence up to your property line, uh, as long as it's no more than 42 inches. However, you know, if you have a dog or something, then that doesn't work for you. So I don't know if there's a perfect solution here. We just know that there's a lot of people that, um, there's a lot of fences that were, uh, put in place, um, on lots and then were annexed into the city. So they, they don't, they have fences that were grandfathered in. And of course, you've got the varying requirements between zones. So at the very least, it would be nice to make everything consistent. And then we just got to pick, you know, what is the appropriate setback and really.
Also add, it was much easier to find examples of fences that were 10 feet or less than there were to find ones that were actually built to the setback. I had actually some difficulty finding one that actually had a 15 foot setback in the PRD zone, which was supposed to have. Almost all examples I saw were less than 15, either between zero and zero and 10. Five was, five to zero was the most common.
So just, if you went back to your first couple pictures, uh, and those were zero setbacks, did those, go, go back to about the first one or two, one, one fence, yeah. So does that comply?
This wouldn't. Right. It would not comply with our current code.
Okay, so that's not a possibility. Okay, thank you.
Right. We, we could make this, yeah, we could make that apply. And if we wanted to, we could have, but it's, it's, you know, it's up to, up to you.
And what, one thing that's interesting about the city is that, um, the city actually requires a permit for a fence, which most cities do not. Uh, but there's a lot of people that get fences that do not get permits. So there's a variety of reasons why you'd have fences in situations. It may have been grandfathered in. And it, but in some cases, maybe they did not get permits before they built their fence in those locations.
This one, I believe, was an envelope one that did not have a permit.
So do you have authority to take those fences down if they're not in compliance? And who has precedent, the HOA or the city?
Uh, the city has, well, it depends. The city can enforce city code. The HOA could find the homeowner if it's not, if there's an, um, it, it doesn't meet their architectural standards in the covenants. But those are two separate processes that don't really touch each other.
Yeah, you, you have to meet both. I mean, so, I mean, theoretically, we could have, uh, reduced setbacks so that you could get a permit from the city that say you could put your fence within 10 feet of that side property line. But if your HOA has standards, let's say it has to be 20. Um, so like if you, I was talking to Justin today because I live in the parks, but in the Highlands, you know, there, well, you, you, I don't think you'd find a corner lot that has a fence that's closer than, I think it's either 15 or 20 feet from the property line because it's pretty strictly enforced there. So, um, I think that if you still have that HOA, that you would still have to get HOA approval and they may, they may require something different.
Thank you, Clay. That's my concern is, I mean, making it across the board, I think, I, I mean, have you considered that the corner lots, that fences so close to the, the property line can obstruct visibility of cars turning around the corner and cause a lot of accidents? We'd have to have that in all the metals association and have that setback.
There is actually another provision, um, in the, the fence regulations that they have to meet a certain site triangle. So, um, they have, even if we allow them to be a bit closer to this, the sidewalk, there has to be a, a site triangles are allowed. So it may be that they couldn't actually build a sidewalk in some cases because there's not good, good visibility.
So could you go to a couple of pictures that are like back to back that shows 10 feet and 15 feet?
Yeah, mute. So here's again, here's the five feet. So you can see it's not right at the, at the sidewalk. It has some breathing room for pedestrians who are walking past. You can also have space to plant for landscaping to sort of hide fence. Um, this is probably my preference, but, um, there's a lot of, there's other options. Here's the 10 foot setback. It's gets, it's, uh, you know, twice as much, um, but more space. And then here's the 15 that's currently in the PRD and MDR zones.
And, and this one's more complicated because in the neighborhoods where you have the rolled curb, then you, people think their property line is the edge of that curb. So if you decided you wanted, if you have a 15 foot setback, you're actually 20 feet from the curb because the first five feet where you can see where Justin's highlighted the right of way. But people think, there's no one that, I mean, I would say maybe that 2% of people would probably know, think, know that that's actually not, that's actually right of way, not their property line.
Yeah. If there's a sidewalk, it's easier to understand.
Can they legally, um, so do, do the, the lawn and the, um, they can still garden instead of garden that first five, we said, right, five feet, the, the right of way.
Yeah, you're definitely allowed to landscape that right of way. Um, just, um, whether it's the, the planting strip to the sidewalk in the street or just that right of way at the edge of the road curve, you're allowed to landscape it.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make him, have some input. I think, um, you know, the, the yards are obviously a lot smaller these days than they were. And, and Milk Creek is trying to encourage younger families, from what I remember, to, to move here. And I think we should keep the, the residents in mind and their happiness in mind. Um, they barely have a yard as it is compared to 20 years ago. And we'd like to give them, I think we should give them as much yard as possible and do a five foot setback.
Yeah, just to follow up with some comments I've gotten from homeowners that actually align very closely with that. I've had a number of parents who said they need, they, they're, they're worried they don't, uh, especially with the small lots where they don't have much backyard. The cider is a significant portion and they said they don't have rooms for their kids to play around and, you know, the privacy and safety of the yard. And so they, they want that shorter setbacks so they can have more of that yard space for their kids.
So classify that under discussion, Pietra. Any of the other board members have any discussion on this? Thoughts? So.
That's right. My only comment would be, this is Sean, my only comment would be just consistency. I, I like what was brought up around families having a larger amount of, of space to work with. Um, again, as long as there's consistency with, um, the application of that, which I understand is the goal of this exercise in the first place.
So are, we're looking for some action on this tonight, correct, Clay?
No, this is just a discussion item. Your feedback's great because we have to come up, we'll have to come up with an ordinance.
Oh.
So freely consent.
Yeah. Well, I want to, I want to speak in favor of what Pietra said. Maybe, uh, things are smaller and smaller and smaller. And if, you know, they've paid for the property, hopefully they can use as much of it as possible. So I'd be supportive of the five foot rule.
And in this case, if you did that, it would still be five feet from the right of way. So it would appear if you're walking by, it would look like it's 10 feet. Because, so you, you do have that piece, right, Justin? That's correct, right?
That's correct. I mean, we could also make it so that it, it's five feet from the, the edge of the sidewalk or curb so that they could actually have it five feet just for whenever the, the street edge is. As opposed to property line, but that's a bit more complicated.
How is that more complicated, Justin?
Um, just that it's, um, I mean, it's, it's easier because you're measuring from the edge of the sidewalk or curb, whatever that is. But more complicated, that's not, I mean, it could be however many feet from the property line.
So we might want to have a small setback from the right of way. I mean, if the city ever needed to get and use its right of way, then if you have a fence that's right up to that, I mean, I think there's something about having a setback from, because the city could decide to put sidewalks in. You know, you gotta tear something up. Um, so I think that's another reason. You know, you gotta tear something up. Um, so I think that's another reason. I mean, you could look at having it being. You know, a foot, one, at least one foot from the right of way, where there's no sidewalk, or. You know, so we can, the thing is, we can bring you back some options in terms of a code, and then you can make some decisions that would be, that would vary on that. Uh, and that's what we would take forward, so we can bring it back in a couple of formats for you.
Yeah, I I think, Alan, I would prefer doing that to see some of the options that you're proposing. And then allow people to have some discussion about those options.
Makes it perfect. Great. Yeah, so we'll we'll bring some options for you guys. I'm guessing at the next planning commission meeting, I will have, um, probably a, you know, five foot options and a. Uh, right away plus one or two feet option, um, and a ten foot for comparison.
Justin, this is Alan again. Um, the the pictures, I'm not certain if I'm right or not, but the pictures. They all seem to be corner lots. Is that true or am I wrong?
Exactly, yeah. So, um, we're only proposing changes to corner lots, um, because on the on regular lots. On the sides and the rear, you can have it right at the property line, and then just the one front, front, front setback. Uh, the corner lots we're worried about, because they have the two front yards, um, to have a better picture of that. So here in this one, for instance, you would, it was something to me, even if we change the rules, there's still to me this front setback, the front yard beyond changed. Or the driveway is, but on the side, that's where there would be that flexibility.
For for my two cents, um, I'm thinking we can all visualize how much more one or two feet would be. And, um, if it's okay with you guys, I I would just like to. Just make a decision on that now. I think we can all visualize the difference of having. The five foot right of way and one foot more. If you go back to that last slide, we can just visualize what that would look like. Now, the one before that, I think we had the black, a black overlay on the bottom. Where the right of way, yeah, right there. So, yeah, either one of those. So is is there a problem? Whoever mentioned that they wanted to delay it till the next meeting? Why, um, is that a difficult thing to to visualize, one or two feet more beyond that black strip?
Well, the, um, commissioner, the one thing is, we, this is not a public hearing, so we have not advertised that we haven't. So we we wanted to do a briefing for you, and we have a couple of other code sections that we'd like to get your feedback on tonight, too, so. We wanted to bring this to you, and then we can develop a resolution for you to encode language and do see.
Too much work for you guys to to expand that, that visual.
And I think, Justin, it might help if you actually had like a plan, you're looking straight down on it, so we could see like. One foot beyond the right of way or five feet or fifteen might be a little bit more graphic for some of us.
Yeah, I can definitely bring a a site plan next time. That's actually probably easier to together than some of these pictures.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, great, good. Thank you for providing the picture. Okay, so that was the seventeen twenty-two fence discussion on our agenda.
Actually, I have a little bit more, um, this is a little shorter, so. We have another section in seventeen twenty-two, uh, under accessory buildings.
Yes.
And our current code, uh, has these provisions amongst others. One, that, uh, no accessory building shall be closer than five feet twenty lot line. Essentially allows the accessory buildings to be built. In setbacks, as long as they have a five foot distance from the property line, they can ignore other setbacks. Um, the provision is that they shall be no larger than six hundred square feet. And, uh, finally, they are allowed to be fifteen feet tall or twenty-five feet tall if they are two stories. Now, possible issues with this we've encountered is that, um, if you could be allowed to have an accessory building that's twenty-five feet tall. Uh, within five feet of the property line, um, which could be. We could keep that, but it it does seem they could, this would allow very large or tall structures very close to, uh, neighbors. Like you wouldn't allow, we, the setbacks usually are designed to keep buildings away, um, uh, from the those property lines, so.
You couldn't, so in other words, like, you can't, you can't currently, a lot of the property lines, you might have a twenty-five, your house has to be. Twenty-five feet from your back property line, but you can build a accessory structure twenty-five feet, five feet from your property line. Um, so, you know, just, I think it's one of those things that it hasn't happened yet. Um, but someone could build, but it could. Uh, and so I think it's just bringing this to your attention and seeing whether some modifications might be necessary.
Yeah, we actually had a a permit application recently for accessory building that was originally going to be twenty-five feet tall. Five feet from the property line, um, the applicant eventually amended their application to make it. Only fifteen feet tall, um, but we we would have had to approve it if this, if the code has changed, stayed how it is now. Other issues are that six hundred feet could be considered too small of a maximum if you have a large property. Let's say you have, you know, an acre or two, um, and you can only have a six hundred foot, you know, utility building or garage. That's that could be, uh, quite small or larger properties. Another issue we've run into is that, um, some, uh, single-family properties have been rezoned to other zones, such as the EGOV. Zone, and EGOV zone does not allow accessory buildings, um, in 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 the zone, and so these people who live. Uh, who have a single-family home that was originally a zone low density residential are now not allowed to build accessory building because it's been rezoned. So some, um, here's an example of that. All the people who live in this area highlighted yellow are not allowed to build accessory buildings at all. Because they have been rezoned EGOV. So some potential changes we'd like to see are, first of all. Possibly reduce the allowed size or height, because your buildings, there are a lot of setbacks. For instance. One possible alternative would be to allow the one-story fifteen-foot accessory building. In other words, a shed or similar buildings to be built within setbacks to five feet from the property line. But if they want to have that twenty-five-foot tall street building, that larger structure, they'd have to meet the regular. During their setbacks, so there'd be an exception to the setbacks for the small ones, but not for the tall ones. Another possible change would be to allow larger accessory buildings on lots that are of a certain size, or a large size. I don't have an exact number, uh, for tonight. We could, we could talk about what that would be. And then lastly, we would like to allow properties that have been rezoned, um, to. Be, have an exception to build accessory buildings. So if you have, was originally allowed, um, you'd be allowed to that, even if it's been rezoned later.
Isn't the average, um, eight, are you talking about accessory dwelling units, right, ADUs and that recent legislation that passed about a year ago, year or two ago?
Not yet. So there is a accessory building, um, it's not a dwelling unit, it it's not allowed to have a, um, a kitchen. Um, or a full, it's not allowed to be a full dwelling unit, so it had, it can have a bathroom or a kitchen, it can have both. Um, so these are, these are just things like garages, offices, sheds, things of that nature.
One other thing that might be considered, Justin, would be if you have a a rambler, well. Your accessory building can't be any taller than your building on the lot. Maybe limit it that way, so you can't have a rambler than a tw- twenty-five foot story in your backyard, I don't know, an option to look at, maybe.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that, so, yeah, you, the building couldn't be taller than the principal building on the on the property.
Yeah, to try to keep it size coordinated with the, one to think about, maybe.
Yeah, definitely.
And my suggestion is, is if it's, maybe even have a one, just minimize it to one story, since they're not going to be dwelling units anyway. Just minimize it to one story and have a setback of ten feet, so that would be a lot more visually acceptable, I think.
I mean, you have maximum lot coverage as well, so you can, if you, commissioner had said, said, you know, we could leave it at six hundred square feet. Uh, but you can only have one story, they would, you you would still have a limitation on how much. Um, lot coverage you can have, so you could just, so there's some protections there from just having a, you know, a lot that would be just one large. Or or a series of buildings.
Right, currently, most zones, most of the LDR zones and purity zones have a thirty-five percent lot coverage, so. At most, thirty-five percent of the property can be covered with structures.
Oh, Justin, this is Alan. Do those, though, do those accessory buildings contain piping? Or water and electrical current?
Uh, they can, yes. Um, they just can't, they just can't have a, um, a dwelling, so they can't have a kitchen and a bathroom, they could have either war. They, they, it's like, yeah, they could have utilities.
So when you're talking about an accessory building and you're talking about a. Property line, how far from the other owner's property line can the accessory building be built?
So currently, it's five feet from the property line, um, on the sides and rear, and then they're not allowed in the front, the front yard. And most accessory buildings are things like, uh, garden sheds, that's what the vast majority of them are. But there are other ones that are standalone garages, or increasingly, people have asked about building offices for work from home.
Are there many twenty-five-foot-high accessory dwelling units in the city?
Uh, no, there are not many. Um, I don't think there's been a huge demand for them in the past. Especially because, since they're six hundred feet maximum, you only, you only have three hundred feet on each level, so it's it's a pretty small. Footprint for, it'd be pretty small and tall buildings.
So I think that that might be what we want to look at, that just, you know, go ahead and limit it to one story. That help, that that limits the impact of the neighbors right away.
Absolutely, and, um, from my perspective, I think so, a a lot of, including our association has. Most sheds, they have a limit of two hundred feet, two hundred square feet. So if you look at the common shed, that would be three times the size. And, um, so you're thinking those would probably be used for a standalone garage. Or just a larger office. Do, what are your thoughts on that? Do you think that's a pretty big size to have closer to the the front of the property line?
Um, well, they're not allowed at the at the front of the property line, they're not allowed in the front yards at all. They have to be in the the sides of the rear. Right, so they're already going to be sort of out of sight in the in the rear of the side of the property.
And you'd also be limited by, if your HOA only allows you to have smaller ones, then you wouldn't be able to do it. You would be, you're still limited by the maximum lot coverage, and you're still limited by things like minimum spacing requirements between structures. So you couldn't put an accessory structure like two feet from your primary residence. You know, you'd have to have the proper setbacks there, so there's other things that help. Um, ensure that there's the right sizing, so if your HOA has two hundred square feet, then. No matter what we do here, it would be two hundred square feet. And that may be why you haven't seen. So, you know, someone go, hey, I I'd like to, you know, have a little, uh. You know, weight room in the backyard with a little loft up on top or something, I mean, they may not have done that, because. The, you know, maybe a lot of the HOAs, uh, prevent it, but one story would, uh, could help here.
So I think we've made quite a few suggestions, uh, happy, happy fishing, just, Justin.
I know, I'm I'm glad to hear suggestions, because we're, I mean, we want your guidance from what direction to take.
Yeah, and that thirty-five percent lot coverage, is that the buildings, not the driveway? Correct. Okay, thank you.
Well, now that I know that these are on the side of property line, I would change my recommendation to one story and five feet from the property line.
And then I have one last very small thing to cover, um. We actually just mentioned a minute ago, accessory dwelling units. We don't have any specific recommendations, um. But I just want to show what some current code is. Right now, ADUs are. Not allowed to be less than four hundred square feet or more than eight hundred square feet. And, um, they may not be more than thirty percent of the, uh. Gross floor area, the 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 main residence. You're also not allowed to have a home occupation in, in, in a, um. I mean, you can have one home occupation per property, but you can't have one of the principal residents and one at the ADU. So there's some things we've been considering are, should we? So there's, there's, there's a bit of a gray area, as you've seen, between ADUs and accessory buildings. Um, the only real difference is that ADUs have their full dwelling unit, they have, you know, a kitchen and a bathroom. So we've been wondering whether we should align the accessory building and ADU regulations to make them consistent with each other. For instance, if you built an accessory building. Could you then convert that to an HOA or vice versa? And, um. Just how should we, should there be consistency in the setbacks and sizing? And also, one thing that I have noticed is, um, should we allow home occupations in ADUs? Um, as more people work from home, it may be beneficial to allow those home uses, but they have, you know, a home office, um, in the ADU. Um, just want to consider, we don't have any concrete recommendations, but if you had any suggestions on the whole section, then we'd be happy to, happy to hear.
Justin, can you explain a little bit about what a home occupation is in more detail?
Sure, so if you, uh, if you're running a business that, um, from your home, you need home occupation permit. Um, and there's a lot of restrictions on those, they can't involve retail sales, they can't involve. More than the four customers per day. Some things are exempt, like, uh, writers or tutoring, or I believe, um. Uh, music lessons or or babysitting, those things are exempt, but other things, if you're a lawyer. If you, um, are an architect or something, if you, if you have your business at your home, you have to get a a permit for that.
Okay, and you're saying converting the baby news into a home office, then? Well, then it, then it's, uh. So it's not determined whether there's a person actually living in that ADU, it's just determined whether it has a kitchen or a bath, and the bathroom. The structure.
Yes, yes, it's a term of whether, whether it's a, it's a full kitchen and bathroom.
And there's some strange things that, but I don't know why the code limits, says a minimum size. I mean, eight hundred square feet is not necessarily, you know, there's a lot of codes that have. You know, eleven hundred, twelve hundred square foot ADUs. You know, you, you need a second floor sometimes, because backyards are typically, I mean, if you have a fifty-five hundred square foot lot with a twenty-five foot setback. And your lot's fifty feet wide, even you can't fit an ADU unless you get that close. Uh, to the property line. The the idea on the second story is, should we bring you back some options of things like? You know, no windows in the back. Um, do you, you know, do you think it's okay to, if we're trying to provide more housing? Do you think that we should allow them that close to a property line? Should they be a little, little further away? Um, you know, because you're really kind of balancing, you know, being able to provide a. Uh, a small dwelling unit in your backyard if your HOA allowed. You know, for your, uh, a family member or, you know, other things, it would be more affordable. Versus, you know, it could be visually not as appealing to a, you know, person who goes back to back with your house if they're staring at the back of a. A building now, or are they, it's, you know, has some privacy issues.
I think that's where the one story goes, is helpful. For privacy sake. I don't see anything, I I don't remember about the ADU law that required parking for, um, additional parking. Can you park on the streets and plug them up, and will the neighbors be upset about that?
Yeah, I didn't include it here, but in the, um, the the code allows. It requires one parking spot per ADU, unless it's, I believe, within. I've hit the distance, a certain distance from, uh, high capacity transit, frequent transit, then it's allowed to not have the parking space, unless. Uh, although the director can require a space if there is limited parking elsewhere in the neighborhood, there's, for seen to be not enough street parking, for instance.
So parking space would be a driveway, an additional driveway, or just a, could it be just a gravel pit that's dug out? Where they could absolutely park, or an old lawn where they can have tire rest, is that the same thing, too?
Yeah, and then. Um, it's just one parking space, and most, most homes in the group that I've seen already have more than the required number of parking spots. This is the driveway will fit two or three, the garage two or three, and so they only need one and a half for the home, and then one for the ADUs. Usually, there's already a parking on site. But again, if it, if there wasn't, it could involve an additional, the requiring additional driveway or, uh, garage or that, that unit.
Well, I guess one idea or concept I'd like to throw out, both of these are an additional building on a site. And I'm wondering if there's, maybe it would be good to have a little bit more consistency between the size and the heights and everything. And whether you put a kitchen and a bathroom in it, or just a bathroom, or just a kitchen, maybe the impact of the neighborhood should basically be the same.
Yeah, that's what, that's one of our, our, our big points. Uh, we want, we were considering there should be better consistency between those two, um, styles of building. Because right now, they're pretty different in terms of setbacks and size. Because right now, they're pretty different in terms of setbacks and size, um, but they have really the same impact on neighbors.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, one little small thing I'd point out is that. Uh, we, we don't have to change it, but um, the thirty percent of the thirty percent of the. The uh, maximum, um, how's it phrased, thirty percent of the gross floor, gross floor area of the residence. Uh, if you have a smaller home, that could make an ADU actually impossible. If you have a one thousand square foot home, thirty percent of that is three hundred square feet, you're already below the minimum. So if you have a small home, old, small older home on a larger lot, you just couldn't build an ADU. Um, so we may want to consider tinkering that to allow the smaller, older homes to be able to build an ADU.
If I'm hearing it right, then we should be looking at. The eight hundred, I mean, we could come up with the same size for structures, but maybe, I mean, eight hundred square feet is not, is a pretty average ADU. And they go up to usually twelve hundred square feet when you get to like model designs, so maybe we could be looking at. Um, limiting the size, maybe it stays at eighteen hundred square foot, but maybe keeping it to one story. But you have the height, so you know, you can have your rough structure, I mean, a lot of that, like, we're doing some. Working on a code right now for another city where it's like sixteen feet or eighteen feet. Um, maybe you limit windows where you're, where you're close to property lines, um, and we could come back with some options that. Um, I know that there's probably HOAs that would probably won't allow these, uh, but you know, even in the parks here, we actually have some, there's some homes on the. Southeast, on the very southeast end of the parks where there's ADUs that are above garages. Uh, in uh, on homes, so there's, they are there, you just don't see them very often.
So um, in terms of, um, thank you, Clay, I'm just trying to understand a bit more about the parking. I understand about being close, that what is it, like one and a half miles or something, I think, from uh, mass transit station, Justin? That they don't have to have a driveway or a parking space?
Let me pull up the exact number, I don't want to give the wrong information out, um.
I'm just concerned if these are encouraged, how much is, and not all, even though the majority of the single family homes do have space for an additional. Car, I I wonder, those who don't, the older residents show homes, are they gonna pack up the streets?
Yeah, so the 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 code says that um, you need one off-street parking space for every ADU. Except for ADUs within one quarter mile of a major transit stop, so. Um, that's only going to be a quarter mile, the only, so it's going to be along. Uh, both over highway for one quarter mile on either side and then one sixty-fourth, um. I don't think there's anywhere else that's going to have uh, major transient stops. So that's only applies a pretty small amount, amount of uh, single family zones. Most of the area, that area is in a MDR HDR mixed use.
So the next use, they they have, they already have the, the parking garages as it is. And from my, when I've worked with um, these issues before, I I remember, and this is two years ago, that. About up to a third, at least, uh, sometimes of of garage spaces in a mixed use development. You know, where they have uh, under underground garages are, those, those spots are not even used, they're not utilized. Is that still, still pretty much standard to say?
I don't know what it is in Mill Creek, I know that is, that that is the case in many places, um. I I I don't know enough uh, here specifically to to say.
Well, the next year sounds, it's probably not going to pertain to them anyway, they probably can't, right, they're excluded from the ADUs anyway, so.
So that's, that's uh, all I have for you guys today, um. You have any questions or comments, concerns about uh, section seventeen twenty-two? Um, you know, feel free to read through it and give us your uh, your feedback, we'd love to have it.
And thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And. And we'll go ahead and go down to seventeen twenty-two, I think we're down for the, the good of the order, Mr. White.
Yes, I know my picture's frozen, but I'm still here, uh.
Your lips aren't moving.
It always gets frozen in the worst, worst spot, I don't know how that happens, but, yes, I think we're, I think that uh, that's it for tonight and next month. We'll bring back uh, in ordinance for you, or what, or if we're not ready, then we'll. Uh, come back and have a further discussion with you, some, at least some draft language for you to look at.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So then, I don't know if we need a, do we need a motion to adjourn, or we can just say we're adjourned?
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned, okay. We'll see you next month then, we're adjourned at eight thirty-four.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks y'all very much.
Bye. Oh, Dave, before we sign off. I'm going to send you the um, uh, exhibit B, which is the, the planning commission resolution. Um, and since uh, Matt's not here, you could sign that one, um. And then either, um. Ideally, let's get that, uh. Wait, well, our council meeting, we're hoping to pass it on Tuesday, so so get that signed the better. Yeah.
Should we, should we print it and just, or Dave, or can we get, run it out to you and get a signature so we can put it in the packet tomorrow? I don't know if you're, if you'll be around.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be around, uh, and I'm leaving Saturday to be gone for five days, so it's sort of got to be tomorrow.
Yeah, so whatever is easiest for you, we can either um, run it by your place, or you can, can um, email and you can, you know, sign and scan it to us. Whatever is most convenient.
Um, why don't you just send it to me tonight, and I'll sign it and I'll just, I'll just scan the signature pages off. And then I'll email it back to you.
Perfect.
Probably the easiest, no mileage involved.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Good, I'll get it, or to you as soon as I can.
Okay, great, thanks a lot. Night.